Order, can we get a roll call?
Sure, good evening, everyone. Chairman Dibble is absent, Vice Chairman Schrader is absent, Commissioners Arguni?
Present.
Commissioner Miller?
Here.
Commissioner York?
Here.
Commissioner Gonzalez?
Here.
Commissioner Mandell?
Here.
Commissioner Salas Agarza?
And Commissioner Munoz?
Here.
Quorum established.
All right, this time, we're gonna go ahead and open up for general public comment. If you've got any general comments to make, if you have comments related to a particular item, we ask that you please hold that for that item. So at this time, if there's any public comment, seeing none, we'll close the public comment period. Next up, approval of absences. Entertain a motion for approval of absence for Commissioner Gonzalez.
So moved.
All right, been motion in second, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passes. Next up, approval of minutes. Anybody wanna make a motion to approve the minutes from June 15th?
Make a motion.
Second.
All right, got a motion and a second, all those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Motion passes. This to the consent public hearing, Andrew, we've got Commissioner Zarguni needs to abstain from item number two, can we, can we do that one first and then come back for the others?
Sure, not a problem at all.
Okay.
All right, thank you, Mr. Chair, so for the record, we'll start with item number two, my name is Andrew Demus with Development Services, item number two is Noasis River Irrigation Park, Block Two, lots 29 through 31, a preliminary of 19.64 acres, staff and TRC have reviewed the plots and determined they are consistent with Texas Local Government Code and the UDC, and we recommend approval.
Thank you, Andrew. Commissioners, y'all have any questions for staff? All right, well, at this time, we'll open up the public comments, anybody have comments to make on item number two? Seeing none, close the public comment and entertain a motion for item two.
I'll make a motion that we approve, item two is presented.
Second.
Motion in a second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. All right, now, moving on, we've got items three through seven.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Chair, so for items, the rest of consent agenda will begin with item number three, Powder Island Number One, Block 14, Lot 10, a replat of 2.412 acres, item number four, Annaville Edition, Block B, lots 1R and 2R, 1.836 acres in size, item number five, Annaville Elementary School Track, Block One, lots 1 and 2, a replat of 14.63 acres, item number six, Bronx Acres, preliminary of 15.865 acres, as mentioned with item two, staff and the TRC have reviewed the plots as submitted and determined that they do meet the requirements of the Texas Local Government Code as well as the Unified Development Code, we recommend approval. And to wrap up the consent agenda, item number seven, which is a request for rezoning, case 0522-02, City of Corpus Christi, a rezoning of 1525 Morgan Avenue from the CG2 General Commercial District and the RSTF2 Family District to the CN1 Neighborhood Commercial District, the request for this case is for the construction of the new fire station number three, staff does recommend approval. And if there are any questions, I'd be more than happy to address them.
Thank you, Andrew. Any commissioners have questions for staff for items three through seven? Seeing none, we'll go ahead and open up the public hearing for items three through seven, if they have public comment for items three through seven. Seeing none, we will close the public hearing and entertain a motion for items three through seven.
Make a motion that we approve, items three through seven is presented by staff.
I'll second.
Got a motion and a second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. All right, moving on to public hearing, item C, go ahead, Andrew.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, what you should be seeing on your screen, this is involving item number eight, which is an appeal of plat determination for Russell Industrial Area, Block 12, Lot 7A.
No.
Have it up on, there we go, okay, cool, thank you back there, appreciate it. Okay, so, back on item number eight, again, this is Russell Industrial Area, Block 12, Lot 7A, a final of .780 acres, this is essentially an appeal to address staff's determination of plat expiration. So I'm sure all of you have taken the chance to read through the report, and scrolling down, which is the most important portion, is the timeline, so as you know, this all came about with the expiration of the plat back in February, this is, of course, prior to the time in which the UDC changed from six-month expirations to a year, so you kinda have to unlearn that we've now moved on to a year, this is still, again, during that six-month timeframe. What's interesting about this plat is that it did not have, typically when you have extensions come before you, we do give notice to the applicant when they receive their letter of approval after planning commission, so the things that you don't see, when you approve all the plots like you did tonight, by next Monday, we'll be sending out a flurry of note, letters of notification to say, your plat's been recommended for, has been approved, here are the following steps and fees to close out and go ahead and begin the process of recordation of your plat. At that time, a date is listed on that letter to say, this is your one and only notice for expiration, back in the day, of course, prior to the UDC change, that had a date of six months after planning commission to say, this is how long your plat is good for as an approved plat. Don't let it expire, one, or two, come in and ask for a plat extension prior to this date, and we have specific, you know, number of days, it's usually about five, six days before the prior planning commission, to go ahead and notify staff so we can make sure it gets on the agenda prior to that expiration date, no different than the sticker on your car, you usually get a letter that says, don't forget, your sticker's about to expire, don't go into that 14-day grace period after expiration, very similarly, that is why we send those letters out, this is your one and only reminder, don't let your plat expire. So that being said, as time ticks by, getting to February, we had not received any further action on this plat, now, typically when that happens, it's because they might be going through the public improvement process, meaning they've submitted plans for improvements, and that's going through review back and forth on rounds, and they just haven't begun construction yet, that's when most definitely we remind them, okay, maybe you're a day past the deadline, but we wanna make sure and get you in for a plat extension. In this case, this particular plat did not have any public improvements, it was purely recordation. Now, the applicant does contend there were some setbacks, of course, they did mention financial burden caused by the COVID-19 pandemic, the taxes of the property were not able to be paid within the time limit of January 31st of the year imposed by Noasis County, the payments of the survey and the plat development fees were also made by the owner, there were some other comments here from the applicant mentioning getting onto a payment plan with the appraisal district, and finally, seeking approval of the reasons above and because of the recent change to 12 months. Now, keep in mind, we as staff always empathize that we know that there is a, still remnants of the pandemic happening, we're still in another wave, and two, there were financial ramifications, of course, this is why, at the time, even our fees were, had not been raised yet, this is a $30 extension, this is why it's so important that we notify folks, please come in, ask for a plat extension, it's almost like the first one's practically free, you're gonna get a staff endorsement for your plat extension because we understand all of these other things are still happening in the rest of the world, now it's supply chain, so, that, that is why, you know, we don't always just, it's not that we're cold to not understand what's happening in the world, but we give so many warnings so we don't have to come through this appeal process, and that lays the decision to you whether or not to say, yes, Mr. Applicant, your plat is expired as staff has presented, you have to reapply all over again, which, for the most part, this was a simple final plat, or you're appealed, you get a plat extension of one year, and we may very well be right here a year from now if no movement occurs, that's the decision that's before you, and option one, option two. So as we have mentioned all the details in this report, low in, at the end, we go step by step through notification process that existing improvements were in place, that no additional public improvements will be required, we are recommending approval of the appeal, because again, we understand there's other things happening in the world, we don't want folks to, you know, penalized because things are happening, we, again, with that sense of empathy, we want, we need development to happen, it's, it's in our department name, Development Services, so, we are recommending approval for the appeal to continue the process, we couldn't administratively do it because, again, it had passed so long since February, we're not talking about a few days after expiration date, it is a significant amount of time, hence why we had to go through the official process of an appeal, but if I haven't officially confused everyone, be more than happy to address any questions.
You wanna have questions for staff? All right, seeing none, we will go ahead and open up the public hearing for item C, anyone have public comment to make for item C? Seeing none, we'll close the public hearing and entertain a motion for item number eight.
I'll make a motion that we approve, item number eight is presented.
Yes, sir.
So, just wanna make sure I'm understanding this right. The complaint is that the applicant saying that the staff did not notify them?
We notify the, the Monday after planning commission, so just as the plots you approved tonight, by next Monday, a letter will be going out to each one of those owners and their engineer of record to say, your plat has been approved, here is the date of approval, very next sentence is, here's the date of expiration, and you need to resolve your public improvements, pay the list of fees, sometimes it's just a recordation fee, for instance.
It's right now, one year.
Correct, it is now one year, during this time, which is the hard part, you have to imagine back in time, that rule hadn't taken place yet, so this was still under the six month, we can't administratively just assume, even if the day before the ordinance of six months to a year changed, everyone before that date was still under six months, so I can't administratively say, you know what, they said yes to six months yesterday, so we're gonna go ahead and give you a year, unfortunately, because that was passed prior to that date change, now, if they come in for another extension, I'm more than happy to advocate for it, but that's, you're gonna have a few of these plots caught in between that six-month to year transition, and this just so happened to be one of those.
So, what, I mean, notice was sent to your engineer of record?
Absolutely, back on 8/9 of 21.
The applicant there?
No, I don't see them present.
I just wanted to know a little bit more clarification of, why the applicant or applicant engineer did not take any action, I mean, yes, you're right, you already supported the document, trying to get one-year extension kind of thing, could open up that tomorrow everybody comes in, plat expires, and asks you for extension, right?
Right. That's, that, that is the, the dilemma we struggle with at staff is...
And I really wanna understand the process very clearly on how when the plat approved, the process of notification happens, because we would expect everybody coming in and expect a plat extended for one year and just create a...
You know, it happens more on the zoning side with special permits, and we put that little clause at the end about, you have to submit a building permit, but within a year, otherwise your special permit expires, I, I never wanna take an applicant all the way through that special permit process all over, it's another 90 days, it costs, it's not even the money, it's the time that really costs them, so I'll say, you know, can you submit something, a site work only permit, do some demo work, something, pull a permit on something to, let me keep your special permit alive.
But I think also applicants, applicants should have a sense of urgency, that when this plat gets approved, there's a timeline, because I personally have issues with the fact that they said that we didn't get the notice, when there was a point, a couple weeks ago, that they're coming up and continue to blame COVID as a reason of excuse, and I just wanna make sure that this is not becoming a habit every day or every time we see these things.
As, as this one year starts to progress further, as plots are gonna inevitably come in for extensions, you know, we're about to go through a UDC change cycle, so, that's the time I tend to be a little more cautious with extensions, because it's, now you're vesting under a previous code, so, it's, expirations are there for that reason, it's to prevent just endless vesting, but, at the same time, we do understand some things, you know, process, and luckily, we haven't gone through a code transition yet, so, it's one of those, while I don't agree with the behavior almost of letting a plat expire and not really keeping in contact with staff, am I gonna lose sleep if, if an appeal is granted? No, it's, we haven't gone through that code change, but I don't endorse...
I just wanna make sure that we, proper notification was sent to the applicant or their engineer.
But the, the notification goes out after, almost immediately after planning commission approves the plat, so, on 8/4, we approved the plat, and then on 8/9, the notification went out saying, you know, this expires on February, it's not like they got a, you know, two-week, hey, it's about to expire, and, you know?
Correct, that's what I'm saying.
Right.
They have plenty of time before it expires.
And this is probably not a more seasoned developer that...
Correct.
Does this on a regular basis and, you know...
That's something...
This becomes a habit, that's an issue.
With, with new N4 coming onboard, I, I know there's a way to, to flag certain permits, I'm hoping there's a way to add a feature to where it will send an automated email to say, hey, you're coming up on your expiration, just like I get an email with our open enrollment period for, for health insurance, hey, don't forget, your...
Right.
Window's gonna close, and so similarly, I'm sure there's a way we can automate the process to get an automatic notification, but, it's this balance of, we don't wanna babysit folks either to not just be nice about it, but it's, it's their project, we're facilitating it, but at the same time, they have to take responsibility for...
And the engineer that's assisting these people really need to step up their game and, you know, take care of their clients and make sure that their clients are aware of all these things.
Right.
Okay.
Okay, thank you.
Not a problem.
All right, Commissioner, you had a motion?
I'll make a motion that we approve the appeal.
Second.
All right, we got a motion in a second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. All right, looks like that's the end of our agenda, move on to director's report, we have a director's report today?
Nothing to report at this time, thank you.
Okay, anybody have any future agenda items for the planning commission? Seeing none, we'll go ahead and adjourn the planning commission and convene the Beach Dune Committee, Planning Commission hearing, can we go ahead and get a roll call for that?
Sure. Chairman Dibble is absent, Vice Chairman Schrader is absent, Commissioners Arguni?
Present.
Commissioner Miller?
Here.
Commissioner York?
Here.
Commissioner Gonzalez?
Here.
Commissioner Mandell?
Here.
Commissioner Salas Agarza?
Here.
And Commissioner Munoz?
Here.
Quorum established.
All right, moving on, we have no absences to approve, so we'll move to approval of the Beach Dune Committee minutes for the June 9th meeting, and I entertain a motion for approval of those minutes.
So moved.
Second.
All right, got a motion in a second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Takes us to public hearing, item D.
All right, thank you, Mr. Chair, just for, for the record, I'm Andrew Demus with Development Services, to my left is Elena Buendia, our senior planner over zoning, and she has been, become very quickly the, the queen of beachfront construction certificates, and, to, the things, again, that you don't see behind the scenes is, during my time that I was working on BCCs directly, I think I can count maybe a handful, and one came before, you know, your other hat as planning commission as the Beach Dune Committee, I, I'm not sure what has happened in the last six months, but there has been 20 that have come in, in about a three-month period, so, go beach development, I mean, great, it's happening, so, that is to say, inflation hasn't had definitely an effect on beachfront development, they are rocking and rolling, so, for that very reason why you have this case tonight is whenever there is development within a certain amount of area of the vegetation line, and I'm gonna quickly go through throughout all those options are, you'll end up with a case of beachfront construction certificate that has to come before the planning commission's other hat as the Beach Dune Committee, that is such case as you have tonight on 102 Bikini for the construction of a single-family home and other amenities. So here's a location of the subject property, as you can see, it's within that distance of what we call the dune line, the vegetation, line of vegetation, and mean high tide, you're gonna wanna know all those terms because those are the exact terms we use in communication with the general land office, the state of Texas bequeaths the power of beachfront construction certificates to the City of Corpus Christi and the power of what are called dune protection permits, meaning how construction impacts specific dunes along that ridge line to Noasis County, so we work in partnership with them whenever development happens on the island, Mustang Island to be specific, so, again, as I mentioned, there are several lines at play, first, you have the beachfront construction line, which is the yellow line you see on the screen, that is to say, if you're within either the first parallel street or State Highway 361, you must come in for a beachfront construction certificate, that means that plans are submitted to the city, we in turn take those plans, send them to the general land office for their comment, meaning do they see any violation or danger to access of the beach, and that, that's all about preservation of the Texas Open Beaches Act, this obviously did not have a negative impact to access, the next line that's important is the 350 setback line, that is based on the distance to this line of vegetation, which is not a static line, that can change whenever there's a storm event, you are going to see a few more of these, as I'm sure as these lots you'll see that are vacant next door, are all within this same kind of magic area, within that 350 setback line, that means each one of those lots, as a home is built, is gonna be right back in front of you, just like this case, because it is within that 350 setback line, now, to, there is a spoiler alert, that that line has moved about 32 feet in the last two years, the reason for that was Hurricane Hannah, Hurricane Hannah, while it didn't have the dramatic effect that Harvey had, did have a more dramatic effect on the dune line itself, and pushed the dunes 30 feet further landward, which means properties that may not have been within that 350 area because of that line of vegetation are now within the 350 area, not as bad as ACUS, so there's no taking of land uses, not to bring up a sore subject, but it's to give an example that a line that didn't exist in the past now exists because of a force of nature, and in that case, as I mentioned, you're gonna see a few more of these homes start to come in before planning commission, I should say Beach Dune Committee, because of the movement of the 350 setback line, but that in a nutshell is where all those lines come from, what they mean, what those measurements are based off of, hence why we're here tonight.
You didn't talk about the erosion line.
Thank you, so the 200-foot erosion line is, again, as you get close to that vegetation line, if you have impact to dunes and to development, you have to give what's called an erosion response plan, that erosion response plan means you're not changing the dynamic, and correct me if I'm wrong, of drainage, and therefore, you're gonna contribute to the loss of dunes or to the undermining of the structure of the dune, and so that's the, you're correct, that's one line I didn't cover, so here's a proposed elevation, not an uncommon design at all, not to say it's, it's not a lovely design, but it's typical what we see, parking on the first floor, and then you'll have two floors of habitation above, of course, that is to also give respect to the velocity, windstorm requirements, and FEMA requirements of Mustang Island. Now, one of the comments back from the GLO is that the pool beneath the proposed suitable structure into the home foundation is as close as possible, again, that's to mitigate and to reduce the amount of footprint and impact to the area of the development, of course, the GLO is big on to disturb as little as sand as possible, of course, what you think moving one grain of sand moving in one area doesn't have that dramatic of a difference, can, if it's close enough to a dune, and you can undermine the integrity of that dune, in this case, fortunately, didn't make such a notice, but nevertheless, they advocate for compacting that footprint as much as possible. Here's some photos of the subject property. which covers a bit of that walkover.
Where does the, where does the boardwalk run in relationship to the, right there on the-
It's going to run right along the side.
South side?
Yes, sir. Now, this section is to explain our review criteria, so just like rezonings, just like plats, we have our mini-section of review criteria, our rubric in which we gauge and grade a submittal for a beachfront construction certificate. As you can see, it goes through various checks and balances, meaning that doesn't reduce the size of access to the beach, again, beachfront construction certificates are all about preservation of access, in no case did we note anything that prevented access from the property to the beach, nor did it impede access by any other persons, meaning some condos you may see have put up bollards and will go across the beach section, now that might be their own privately-owned property, but no homeowner could arbitrarily, even though their property line goes out there, could not install a row of bollards and block it off because that's protected under Open Beaches Act. That is why, again, the BCC is there, is to make sure that we are double-checking that no access is impeded, nor does existing access somehow change. Now, additional requirements based on the erosion response plan, of course, get into the freeboard, which we all know and love, because of FEMA flood requirements, you have to build one foot above base flood elevation. Now, we did send out notices, just like every zoning case, and public notice plats, in this case, just similarly 200-foot buffer, 21 notices sent out, zero in favor and zero opposition. And we as staff are recommending approval of both the BCC and the ERP, and if there are any questions, be more than happy to address them.
Thank you, Andrew. Anybody have any questions for staff?
Yes, ma'am. Yes. That would be right there. And, and that's a good point, so the-
It just looks like it's just so close that, you know, it's like, okay, because I know they have to be so many feet away from-
A window.
A foot away from a window, and for every foot of depth, there has to be one foot away from the, the elevation of the structure, the foundation of the structure, so by, by no means am I an expert of the International Pool Code, but the few bits and pieces I have learned over time, that more than likely cannot be that deep of a pool because of its proximity to the actual structure itself. And two, that is why the GLO says, we would prefer that you actually have it closer to the structure, because it minimizes the, the impact and disturbance of the sand. So it's kind of a catch-22, okay, we can put the pool closer, it won't, can't be as deep because of the distance to the foundation of the house.
Yeah, that's what I was thinking of, I thought, my gosh, if it's that close to the house, sometimes, you know, that, the foundation would just, I, I just think that's a, that's a problem waiting to happen-
Sure.
-within several years, you know, and then it could be a domino effect to other areas, I don't know, I don't even know if the other houses have any pools or not.
I would say this is very similar to zoning, so whenever you hear zoning cases, just like tonight, the ability to build a fire station doesn't mean they will automatically get a free building permit, that they won't have to go through a review process, so the pool will essentially be allowed to be placed there, but it doesn't mean that the design will have to be accepted, they'll still have to meet pool code, building codes, everything else, so it's, it's by no means a get out of jail free card.
Okay, thank you.
But I did notice on, on this, and I just spotted it, was the intent originally to have the pool-
In the back.
In the very back?
And it was-
Right.
Moved to, again, minimize that footprint.
And that is based on GLO comments?
Yes, sir.
Got it. Cool. Beautiful home.
Any other com, or questions for staff? Alright, seeing none, we'll go ahead and open up the public hearing for item 10. Anybody would like to make public comment? Seeing none, we'll go ahead and close the public hearing and entertain a motion.
Maybe that we approve the beachfront construction certificate as well as the, what was the other?
Erosion response.
Erosion response plan-
Yes, sir.
As presented by staff.
Alright, got a motion in a second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes.
Alright.
And with that, we'll adjourn the Beach Dune Committee.
Great meeting, I appreciate it, thank you, everyone.
It is important to shut off your property's water flow if your pipes are frozen or losing water. First, locate your water meter box, sometimes it is in the back of the property or close to the street. Once you locate your water meter box, carefully remove the lid because there is a wire connected to the transmission unit that is connected to the register. Do not disconnect this water-